Go ahead.
Do you know?
Hold a meeting, no order. Roll call for board members.
Cox?
Yes.
So, uh. Shipman?
Here.
And Beverly?
Here.
And clerk?
Here.
Number three, discuss or take action on consent agenda for all items under this consent agenda will be heard consecutively unless opposition is presented, in which case the contested items will be considered and discussed and appropriate action taken separately. Eight minutes from October the eighth of twenty-four.
I'm looking for them, I'm sorry, I seem to have misplaced them, I know I printed them out. I don't know. I did not, I thought I did. There we are. The town of Bradley held a regular board of trustees meeting on Tuesday, October eighth, twenty twenty-four, at seven P M. The meeting was held at Bradley Community Building located at three twenty-two McKee Street, Bradley, Oklahoma. Call to order, board member Earl Cox called the meeting to order at seven P M. Role call. Town clerk Rachel Snyder called the role, board of trustee members present were as follows. Earl Cox, Zaina Shipman, Dean Beverly, therefore a quorum was established. Discuss or take action on consent agenda. Earl Cox read items on the consent agenda. Earl Cox moved to approve the consent agenda. Dean Beverly seconded it. Votes were as follows. Cox, yes. Shipman, yes. Beverly, yes. Discuss and/or take action on mail received. Earl Cox motioned to pay all bills. Votes were as follows. Earl Cox? Yes. Zaina Shipman, yes. Dean Beverly, yes. Discuss or take action on twenty twenty-five REAP application amount and status. Rachel Snyder, town clerk, stated that Ronald Hill from ASCOG had called her and stated the board need to decide. And state how much they were asking for on this grant. Grant, the whole amount to redo the streets of Bradley would not be awarded all at once. The board decided to repose seventy thousand for this round. Round of the grant process. Earl Cox made a motion to approve, applying for seventy thousand from the REAP grant. Dean Beverly seconded the motion. The votes were as follows. Cox, yes. Shipman, yes. Beverly, yes. Item six, discuss and take action on tree trimming bids. Rachel Snyder stated that bid number one from Phillips Tree Care was nineteen hundred dollars. Bid number two from J and E Tree Services was twenty-two fifty. Bid three from Anderson A Plus Construction was for sixteen hundred. Earl Cox made a motion to approve bid number three from Anderson A Plus Construction in the amount of sixteen hundred dollars. Dean Beverly seconded the motion. The votes were as follows. Cox, yes. Shipman, yes. Beverly, yes. Discuss and/or take action on ASCOG dues. Rachel Snyder, town clerk, stated that in order to be current with ASCOG and eligible for the REAP grant, the town of Bradley needed to approve and be current with the ASCOG dues in the amount of two thousand one hundred and seventy-seven dollars. Earl Cox made a motion to approve payments. Payment of dues. Dean Beverly seconded the motion. Votes were as follows. Cox, yes. Shipman, yes. And Beverly, yes. Discuss or take action. Update information with ARPA. Town clerk Rachel Snyder is working on getting the required backup codes needed to enter the ARPA portal and has had help from Donna Thornburg in reaching out and getting a response from O M L. Rachel will continue to work on this situation and will be contacting the treasury. Earl Cox made a motion to allow Rachel to continue to work on this matter. Dean Beverly seconded the motion. The votes were as follows. Cox, yes. Zaina Shipman, yes. And Dean Beverly, yes. Discuss or take action on purchase of office supplies. For town clerk. Rachel Snyder requested she be allowed to purchase ink, copier paper, hanging files, et cetera, for the performance of her duties as town clerk. Earl Cox made a motion for the purchase of supplies for town clerk. Dean Beverly seconded it. Cock, the votes were as follows. Cox, yes. Shipman, yes. Dean Beverly, yes. Discuss and/or take action on repair slash buy battery for town excavator. Earl Cox will be researching battery for the town excavator and needs approval to purchase one. Once one is located. Earl Cox is also researching repair work for the town excavator. Earl Cox made a motion. To approve the purchase of a new battery for the town excavator. Dean Beverly seconded the motion. The votes were as follows. Earl Cox, yes. Zaina Shipman, yes. Dean Beverly, yes. Discuss and/or take action on open house for remodel of community building. The board of trustees would like to host an open house on October nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, from two to four P M. So the community may see the remodel work that has been completed at the community building. Earl Cox made a motion to have the open house. Dean Beverly seconded it. The votes were as follows. Cox, yes. Shipman, yes. Dean Beverly, yes. Discuss or take action on donation for Rural Water District number three Halloween cookout at the town of Bradley Park on October thirty-first. The Rural Water District is hosting a Halloween cookout at the town park on October thirty-first. Frankie Matthews asked if the town would be willing to donate drinks, charcoal, and candy. Earl Cox made a motion to approve the donation. Dean Beverly seconded it. The votes were as follows. Cox, yes. Shipman, yes. And Beverly, yes. Earl Cox made a motion to adjourn the meeting at seven thirty-one P M. Votes were as follows. Cox, yes. Shipman, yes. And Beverly, yes.
Okay, Dean. Paying the bills, P S O, all accounts. R W D, all accounts, and billing, waste connection, O N G. And Nichols Nixon. I make the motion, we pay the bills. Second.
Yes.
I pick it up.
These are the only ones with checks. This is the waste connection and the P S Os that get paid online. And then those are the P S O bills. For each one, and the O N G and the waste connections.
Okay. Thank you. I don't have.
Yes, sir. That's the O N G bill.
Number seven, purchase order, membership association, South Central Government Bond. My lad Hunter.
They need to be signed. The purchase orders for those.
I make the motion, we sign them.
Yes.
Format here.
That's me, that's you. Zaina. Dean.
Okay, number four, discuss and or take action on twenty twenty-four budget account, Barbara Fowler. I make the motion, we.
Second. Let Ms. Fowler present it.
Since this is your first time having this format. Um, just want to go over everything, basically, the first page is your budget message, which basically just covers why you're doing the budget and what is on. On the budget. And it highlights the items that are larger than normal. And for this one, um, it's. A budget is seventeen thousand dollars in. Professional fees. Because we're going to have to be doing the three years of the. Agreed upon procedures. And. Your budget for twenty-four, twenty-five. And the next page. It is your public hearing notice, that's how it was published in the paper. And, um. With this style of budget, you budget your expenses by. Department. So that's why at the bottom you have. General government, street alley, and solid waste. Next page is the. Detailed. Budget, and you take the last. Agreed upon, that had been finalized, which was twenty twenty. And twenty-one. The next column is your budget for twenty-three, twenty-four, which you didn't have one. Um, you take your actuals, normally that is done through April, but we're behind because of this. Because of thing being new to everybody. And then the next column is, um. Where we project, how much we think. You're going to spend. And the last column is your budget amounts for twenty-four, twenty-five. And basically, we just take your projected and. We round it up to the. Up or down to, um. The nearest ten dollars. So for your taxes. You look over in the right-hand column, the total being budgeted there is twenty-three thousand and eighty dollars. Franchise taxes, twenty-four eighty. Street and alley is a thousand twenty. Um, that's because your excise tax is being a go because of your. Agreed upon not being done. So that's why it's higher. Than the previous year. Um, the next call, uh, next section is for the use of vast ex, that's your interest in your rental income. And the budget is six hundred dollars there. Um, next session is your solid waste projecting. You're going to bring in thirteen thousand four hundred and eighty dollars there. So your total. Revenue is budgeted is thirty-nine thousand six hundred and sixty. We're going to have to use twenty-three thousand one hundred and forty dollars of your cash to cover your expenses. So the amount that is available for budget is sixty-two thousand eight hundred dollars. And next section is for your. Expenses. For your clerk, um, it's forty-eight hundred dollars. Previous year was sixty-four hundred, that's for your previous clerk wasn't paying herself monthly to your pay her so often, so you'd have some of the previous year also in there. And the next is your. Materials and supplies. Go to the next page, and that total on there is twelve thousand one hundred and forty dollars. And, um, on that section, the only thing that's not rounded is your internet. Because you didn't have any internet last year, but you are going to have it from what I understand it from you, Rachel. So I'll put in, um. Twelve hundred thousand based on the previous years. And the next section is your other services and charges. Um, that's the total of twenty-four thousand five hundred, that's that, um. Seventeen thousand dollars for our fees for getting everything caught up. And then that's decreasing the legal fees to. Five thousand dollars for the regular competitive duty we have as much. Everything else is just rounded. Based on what you spend. In the previous year. So your total. General government department expenses is forty-two thousand nine hundred and ninety. Your street alley, a budgeted, uh, five thousand one hundred and ten dollars for street lighting. And your solid waste for your contract labor, and then for the solid waste services, budgeted fourteen thousand seven hundred dollars, which means total expenditures is sixty-two thousand eight hundred dollars. Any questions? Is this all new to you? Or just basically took the twenty-three, twenty-four, since it's all new, and this did it based on that. And then if we need to change it, we can do a budget amendment. If you would like to change something right now. We can do that also.
I make the motion, we approve the report. Yeah, second.
And I want to thank Rachel.
Go ahead, ma'am.
I want to thank you for your, um, your help and your good job that you've done. I know this is new to you too, you're trying to find it, but I've been receiving stuff timely instead of because I understand she works during the day, so she can't be here every day. So, well, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Number five, discuss and take action. On town involvement and seasonal town parties, Halloween, Easter, and et cetera.
Um. There was confusion on my part and probably the community's part, the last time when we discussed donating. I thought they meant the town would be donating, but upon further discussion with Mr. Cox, we looked into it. And the town is not allowed to donate to parties. The open house was acceptable because it was just cookies, and it was for the whole community. Um, Halloween is generally for children, that can't be considered the whole community because it is a child-specific, same with Easter. So at future meetings, when we, um, when the community asks about parties and such, that would be on each resident or, uh, community member to want to contribute out of their own personal accounts. Um, here are the receipts from Ms. Cox's personal account and my personal account on the cookies, the Jew, uh, pops, things, candy, that were purchased for the Halloween party. They were purchased out of our own private accounts. So those receipts are with this email from, um. Lucas, our town attorney. I just wanted to clarify and make sure that we were doing what we were allowed to do.
Yeah, at the time, I, I thought we were able to, and we found out we couldn't, so that's reason that we basically was person, she was part of it, and my wife and I was part of it. And that way there's no, no money come out of that town account.
So I just wanted to, um.
I make the motion with approve this.
Yeah, second.
That from now on.
Yeah.
It'll be community members out of their own private accounts, just for clarification and transparency. So nothing gets mixed up again.
I just want to say thank you all very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Drive safe, please.
Drive safely.
I'll be talking to you tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay, number three, oh, you want to vote on that, or you got it all?
You did it, it's, it's, yeah, now it's the.
Discuss and take action on selecting a letterhead.
When we're reaching out to other entities, um. When we're sending letters to, let's say I had to communicate with Ms. Fowler, or, you know, anybody. That we're sending to get information from them. It doesn't look very professional to just. Yeah. So it'd be nice to have a letterhead, and Ms. Barrett Baker was nice enough to give us three options, she designed three options for us to choose from.
Little small deal, put the dragon on there.
Let me go.
Yeah, that's my dragon graphic.
It's too much.
It's my dragon graphic. I mean, it's really, um, graphic friendly.
Okay, I make the motion, we'll go with this letterhead here.
Then you go with the dragon.
I need a second minute.
I can't tell which one.
It's number one?
Uh, number two.
Oh, it's number two, sorry. It's the one with the dragon. At the top, but not in the body of the letter.
That's okay, it works.
That's wonderful.
Good idea.
That graphic transfers really well, their T-shirts, paper, it's on the highway signs.
Okay, number seven, discuss and take action on removing Dean Sokow from Liberty National Bank account.
I was contacted when I sent the meeting minutes, when we did remove Mr. Sokow, and we approved, approved removing him and approved adding Zaina. But the wording wasn't correct, so the bank kicked it back. I don't know how many other ways you can say. Please remove, but they have their own, and they wanted to state, discuss or take action on removing Dean Sokow from Liberty National Bank. Votes were as follows.
You remember, I went for three months.
I went for three, four times, going with them up there, yeah.
So, do we approve removing, does anybody want to make a motion?
I like the motion.
Yes.
Maybe we'll get you off for one of these days, Dean, I don't know.
Okay.
Okay, number eight, discuss and or take action on Mayor Earl Cox, Chair Two, Zaina Shipman, and Chair Three, Deany Beverly, and Town Clerk Rachel Snyder to be added to the Liberty National Bank account. I make the motion.
I'll second it.
I had put.
Yes.
To add just Zaina, they need all of us.
Okay, number nine, discuss and or take action on update on ARPA.
After an exhausting few months. Of. Back and forth with the treasury, I had to escalate it to their tier three, because they just kept sending me the same emails stating the same thing from the last one, from the one before, from the one before. And I was like. So I finally got through to a really nice lady on the ARPA line, the treasury line, she escalated it to their team three, you are not going to believe this. I get a re, I get an email saying, oh, basically, call login.gov and they'll reset it for you. So. And that was even with advice through O M L that Donna directed us to.
Yeah.
And, oh, mm, so needless to say, we can, I can now access the ARPA account. And the, uh, means of getting in. Are locked in the. File cabinet. Because it is a password.
Yeah.
Of such. And, um, I have access to it. Now, because it had not been accessed, we do have some issues with getting the reporting done. So. I don't think there's a motion to be made to approve that I finally got in.
I make the motion.
No, I'm saying, just feel safe.
Okay, number ten, discuss and take action on contractor, contractor with Amy, with Amy Loggins, and assess with ARPA reporting.
ARPA reporting is a very convoluted federal government program. I have never, I was not here when the grant was written, I was not able to take any of the training. Um. But yet, I'm the one that's going to be having to do the reporting, and I need help, I need someone who can train me. Ms. Loggins is the Director of Operations from August twenty twenty to present, and she is our program. Our federal program facilitator. She writes all of the grants for Alex Public Schools, and she does all the reporting. She is offered to assist me.
Wonderful.
Um, she has her master's in business, education, administration, and supervision.
Cool foundation she.
Yes, sir. Um, she, I, she's done such great things like our summer program, the, she got us a three-year grant. It was fifty thousand dollars every summer to have the summer program for the children, so that they stay engaged and learning, and. And especially because our community, not just, but the school's community, does have a high. Ratio of parents who can't provide these things. It was trips to art museums and to libraries and to all kinds of wonderful things that were within the grant.
I make the motion, then we.
I, I did not. She, I apologize, we need the backup. Um, it is a five hundred dollar stipend to assist until all the reporting is finished. And if you break that down, she's, she said a minimum of thirty hours, so if you break that down. It's not that much.
Number eleven, begin the comments, each person wanting to be. As branded board members. As branded board members, will be given three minutes to speak only. Questions about the items on the month agenda can be answered by the board member. Any other questions will be put on the next month agenda and answered at that month meeting.
That's a lot.
Does anybody want to address the board?
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I second.
And who wants to address the meeting?